I'd like to call a meeting to order for the Dover School Committee meeting on Monday, May 20th at 6:30 at Chickering Library. Do I have any community comments? Hearing none? We'll move on to item number three, which is the reports. And Ms. Dialle.
Thank you very much. We've been so excited this year to have the opportunity to talk about cultural responsiveness across all the grades. And for the past two weeks, we've been talking extensively about it during our common planning times with our grade level teams and have been really excited about the work that's happened and we're equally excited about continuing that next year. So, thank you for that leadership across the district. It's nice to know that we have peers throughout to be talking to about that. Curriculum and learning, we are in the midst of our end of year assessments, those are moving forward. I have a big section this month on professional development. We've had a lot of that around trauma-informed care and innovative practices. And Ms. McCoy, I know you have that in your report as well, so I won't go into depth on that. But suffice it to say, we continue to be on our journey in terms of becoming a trauma-informed school and think that that's really good and important work to be doing. In terms of professional growth, all the educators have done a really fine job in terms of delving into their goals, taking them seriously, and really reflecting on those. We try to create a climate where we set a goal and oftentimes, we change course a little bit over the course of the year depending on how our students respond. And the most important part is that we're reflecting on that and thinking about what is our course from here going forward. So, the educators have done a fabulous job with that. You know, notice that we have a change in literacy specialist for next year. We're sad to see Sheila Harper go, but we're thrilled to have Priscilla Steffen step into that role for next year. And she has already started working with teams and laying the groundwork for some good work next year. And then I'm very happy that we had another international night. And I feel that people are really seeing diversity as something that is valued here and that people want to continue seeing visibly. So, we're hoping to do more than that next year in terms of some of our assemblies and community gatherings. Do you have any questions?
I have one question.
Let's hear it.
I was just curious, what constitutes trauma? Because I think about really profound events and maybe that's not, maybe some wider game than that.
That's an excellent question. And many people first coming into the discussion are thinking about those one-time significant events. It is broadly defined, something like long-term poverty can also be defined as trauma. And it's also somewhat person-specific. So, two people going through the same kind of event can have very different responses. One person, even within the same family, may have a traumatic response in terms of perhaps shutting down or having outward explosive behaviors. And another person in the family may deal with it very differently. So, for us as a school, we want to make sure that we're informed and aware of those different signals that may or may not come in to us and to make sure we're creating a really positive climate of care. Some of the videos that we looked at during our professional development the other day were highlighting some different cases. And one of the examples was from a high school where a guidance counselor connected with a child on a regular basis. Nothing stood out at all at the time. And 12 years later, she wrote and said, "I was having these traumatic events at home with my parents and you really saved me and got me through school." So, it's things like that that are important for us to think about in terms of a safe, positive climate, which is important whether people have experienced trauma or not, but particularly important for those kids who've experienced that. So, does that help?
I think it's a broader definition than I was initially thinking, so that's helpful.
Yeah, thanks for saying that.
Is there any work to be done for incorporating knowledge, information about trauma into the policies, procedures, the response circle?
I think that's something that we'll be looking at as a leadership team. I know we have some policy reviews coming up. Immediately, something does not come to mind in terms of our policies, but I appreciate your asking and we'll certainly have a keen eye to that as we review our documents. Thank you. Does something come to mind for you?
I was just wondering if that's been looked at.
Thank you.
Two things. So, the international night, I remember when you first suggested it, so it was great to see it again and after so many years, so, well done, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, but it was your idea. Maybe a question to Dawn, if I could. The hiring of the next literary specialist, she's been working with teams already, how does that work from a budgetary perspective?
She's already a special education teacher here in the school.
How about that? Okay, thank you.
So, it works out really well.
That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? I was just gonna highlight again, I zoned in on the extra international night, which I thought was fantastic. It's been, I think someone said, six years.
Six years.
And I was talking to a gentleman who his kids are long out of school, he's here representing a group, and he was looking around saying, and he's been involved with Chickering for a long time in the town of Dover and said, "This is fantastic. This is something that wasn't going on when he was here and his children were here." And then it just rings true with everything that he's been talking about for the last couple of years under the leadership with Dr. Keough, and it just continues to illustrate, you know, the differences that everyone sees and lives and the culture, and it was fantastic. So, thank you.
I'll take it here.
That was good.
Thank you.
I believe, Ms. McCoy.
Sure. So, I'll pick up with Mr. Jaffe's question about the policies around trauma-informed care. I don't think necessarily we're there yet, but I will say that the knowledge and information that we've gathered around supporting our kids who may have experienced trauma or continue to experience trauma is, I'm looking at our D cap, our district curriculum accommodation plan, which lays out the practices that all teachers should be doing in the classroom. And then tier two are kind of the small group interventions, and tier one are those individual interventions. And so, hence the change in the Massachusetts policy from RTI to MTSS, because RTI is often academic interventions, and now we really need to think about those social, emotional, and those behavioral. So, I know that all schools have been updating their decaps to make sure that we're folding in policies that are good for trauma-sensitive students into all three tiers and really then looking at the support personnel that they have in addition to the classroom teacher to articulate, you know, what's the role of the guidance counselor, what's the role of the adjustment counselor, and how can we support the kids in the different tiers. So, I think it's really all coming together nicely, and I think that's a good point, is looking at policy next to see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted there. Ms. Dialle mentioned the literacy specialist, we're really excited about rolling that out. I think that role is gonna shift a little bit here to be both in the classrooms and supporting teachers to make sure that their literacy instruction is kind of vertically and horizontally aligned between the grades, so that, the idea being, as you know, same for special education, the more that you can do in the classroom, the less need there is for small groups and individualized services, which become more costly. So, this person will be working in the classroom with teachers as well as looking at data and working with kiddos who need interventions for short amounts of time or longer amounts of time. We now have a literacy specialist at Pine Hill, which is new and different. And she, just like our Chickering friend, is very well-bursted in all different realms, special education, ELL, et cetera. So, I think they are going to be a dynamic duo who might easily take over the district. And just last week, we had Dr. Epolito, who was just working as a consultant, because unfortunately, we don't have a literacy specialist in the middle school budget at this point in time. But he came in and he worked with our middle school English team as well as the special educators to kind of talk about, you know, what tier one, what instructions should look like in the middle school classroom. And we're hoping to pull together a couple of middle school leaders with our two literacy specialists and Gretchen Dunnehy from the high school together to kind of make sure that we have a continuum of instruction and interventions going on. So, it's really exciting, lots of positive energy there. Cultural responsiveness, as Ms. Dialle mentioned, teachers have been sharing at our last leadership team meeting two weeks ago, our building leader shared all of the work that's been done within their schools. And honestly, I think that there was a lot of, "Oh, my goodness, Chickering really did a lot this year." And I think other schools were kind of like, "Oh, you know, okay, we can do that too." So, congratulations to Chickering, because they really have accomplished a lot and given some others a run for their money in terms of things to think about. So, well done, Chickering. That being said, we had our last meeting of the Academic Innovation Committee for this round on Friday. We are finalizing the competencies for our graduate, we're finalizing the image and working with a graphic designer, and we'll be rolling that out over the next few weeks. We have just reached out to our teacher leaders within the buildings to see if they would present at their next faculty meetings and kind of share the work of the Innovation Committee at the faculties. We're gonna hold a workshop date in August for any teacher who wants to come and do the six-hour version of the 20-hour Innovation Committee, so they can get kind of caught up and help with the next phase, the planning. And our parents are right now weighing in on how they can be ambassadors for the portrait within the parent and larger DS community as we start to think about phase two for, you know, the larger team. So, that's that.
Beth, can you talk a little bit about the interesting Fuse Fellowship? What sort of time commitment is it for the people?
So, it's actually, it's an 18-month commitment. So, it starts in August and it'll run for a year and a half. And we are lucky to have one Fuse Fellow from Chickering, one from Pine Hill, and two from the middle school. And while I was reluctant at first to really sit down and listen and learn about it, because I was thinking, "We don't need another program, we don't need another login, we don't need another, et cetera." It's more of an approach to personalizing learning, so it supports teachers in finding ways for students to either, you know, use online modules or different materials in the classroom to meet their levels of readiness, levels of interest, et cetera. So, all of this stuff that the Innovation Committee and Special Education and Cultural Responseness talk about, meaning the kid where they're at, and really getting them engaged in the work. Our Fuse Fellows are gonna be out learning strategies to do that, that they can then bring back here and do professional development for their peers. It's also, part of it is not only will they be getting trained and being able to kind of leak back the information and strategies to their home schools, they actually service coaches to other districts. So, we'll have Fuse Fellows from other districts coaching us here. So, you kind of get that cross-pollination between schools too, which I think is good for calibration in terms of kind of what's new, what's out there, you know, what others are doing that we could learn from.
Has it been announced who they are?
Kathy Gillis. Yeah, Kathy Gillis, is a special educator here. Phenomenal choice, yeah.
Great.
And again, I think we're lucky across the district with our four choices and hopefully it'll work together and bring us all forward.
Great, thank you.
Can I commend Beth for her leadership of the Academic Innovation Committee and Laura and Renee, my fellow committee members, will concur. It's quite a sight to behold when she put this process together, her facilitation skills, organization, well, thinking, obviously, but just keeping that many people moving on such a tight timeline, it was extraordinary. And it was a really interesting group to be a part of. It was very cross-district, parents to administrators and a group of people that you don't normally get to sit down with, students and parents from both towns. It was really, I felt privileged to be part of it, and I really commend you for getting us through that much work in such a structured and planful way. And I hope it ended with what you were hoping for and after.
Yes, and thank you for that, yeah.
It was a wonderful process.
I second that. Well, it was a lot of time for the committee, both, we looked at other towns and they did three full days, and I'm thinking, "How are we gonna do three half-days?" And the trick was making them come in the night to do the extra homework. So, it was a lot of time on the part of all our committee members, so thank you.
But you kept moving.
It never felt like a lot of time.
It didn't, I know.
It always felt like very efficient, thoughtful, like anything you said, even the swing thing.
They're not gonna know with that.
No, but they have to say that with every one thing.
We'll keep them guessing.
Well, is it possible, and I don't know if you could do it in a few minutes, but not necessarily for now, but I'm thinking for June, is it possible for an update or is there something you can share?
Sure.
I think you said it was gonna roll out in the summer, but maybe like, for those of us that haven't been as close to it, it might be interesting to hear what was going on.
Absolutely. We can share kind of the overview, we'll have hopefully a draft of the portrait and the competencies that we can share in June. And then next year, the committees will have to vote on the portrait, because it'll obviously affect what we're driving towards graduation and the requirements of our graduates. Hopefully by then, we'll have a video that kind of captures our journey, some of the clips from all the events and, you know, some of the committee members weighing in about the process. So, yes, more to come.
All right.
And if you're really excited about it, you can go onto the website, because all like 10 hours of research and panel discussions are on there, and you can watch every minute of it.
I'll take the bridge version. Anything else for Beth? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Keough?
Yes. Now that everybody talked about Beth and the innovation committee, I'll just take that off my list. No, I too wanted to just weigh in on the just phenomenal job Beth did with that. And I have to admit, it was a big ask, you know, to bring that many people to make sure you had all those voices in the room to talk about what it is we want our kids to know or be able to do when they leave here. Seems like a simple thing, but it's not. We don't always agree on what's most important. And, you know, you used a lot of backwards designs, so there was a ton of modeling going on and thinking about, "Okay, so what are the qualities?" Like, if we were looking at the qualities of a great school, with kids coming out of this great school, what would we see? And took a lot of time to look at some of those schools, and that allowed us, this group, to move forward and kind of set up what we think are these kind of key tenants in our portrait of a graduate. So, you can't underestimate the importance of that and how difficult it is to do. If it was easy, everyone would do it. Everyone would have this perfectly clean description, and we'd all be teaching in the direction that we decided as a community is the direction to head. It's hard because of the time and energy that goes into it. So, I definitely agree with you on that, Beth, and want to congratulate you on getting thus far, since we're not out of the woods, but this was a big, big year for us. And also thank Renee and Laura and Brooke for participating and all the many, many others. So, I also did not have on my report, but wanted to mention that we had a challenge-success retreat today, which I thought was really helpful. And I think we learn a lot when we do that, sit down and talk about, "Well, where are we? What have we accomplished and what do we wanna work on moving forward?" I got pulled away, but it was great to be in the room with people and just to see how all of this work sometimes looks a little all over the place when you don't, you know, you can't get above it to see it, but all of these things are interconnected. In our strategic plan, we talk about, you know, raising the bar for ourselves academically. That's happening. We talk about the social, emotional well-being of our kids and how it connects to the academic piece, and that stuff's happening. It's happening in all these little different places, which is why I constantly try to remind people of that on Twitter. That's a great place for us to be able to spread out quick hits of things going on. I mentioned in my report that we had a visit from Congressman Kennedy. That was just a wonderful afternoon. It was not this big, grand event. The fact that he came to speak with and kind of join with these kids as they rededicated or replanted this tree that had died, for lack of a better word. Was it a storm or something? Something took out the tree?
I think it was a pest or something.
Okay, so.
Didn't do well.
But that was just kind of the end of the year for these kids who had done a lot of different things. And it was really the perfect kind of relationship between parents and staff and kids and working on these things that are better for our society. Helping our kids to be more aware about things like that only strengthens this idea of "we are DS" and this idea that "we are one community." So, that was also awesome. I wanted to bring the committee up to speed on our special education coordinator and team chair search, because as you know, we have, we reconfigured, we reorged our special education administration for K-12. So, and we hired Kate McCarthy earlier this year as our K-12 Director of Student Services. But as you might recall, we also were going to have a special education coordinator at the elementary level and a team chair at the elementary level, as opposed to two team chairs with no administrative kind of authority. So, we now have a coordinator position and a team chair position. And I'm very close to announcing who those people are, but I wanna make sure I finish that off, and that's tomorrow. So, I'll put something out to you guys probably tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday to let you know who we're moving forward with. But I have to tell you, I'm really, really excited about the candidates. You know, I know, somewhere along the line, I was hearing how hard it's gonna be for us to find people. And we have attracted some really strong people through this process, so I'm excited about that and just wanted to let you know. Finally, I wanted to bring you up to speed and will, will at every meeting, up to speed on where we're at on the start times process. Since April 30th, we knew and we heard that night from all three school committees that how we proceed from here is everything. And thank goodness, we were wise enough to allow time to do that, but that doesn't mean we can just kick the can down the road. So, we really are moving forward on this. We're pulling together, I've been working a lot with Michael Joffe, who's been the vice chair of that task force from the start. We are now developing what we see as the subcommittees of the start time task force phase two, the subcommittees, which will focus on things like transportation. What do we need to do with transportation in order to make it as efficient and effective as possible? What about staff implications? What are the implications for the staff with these changes? And are there things that we need to consider or perhaps do to better this experience as we go through this transition for our faculty and staff? Before and after-school activities, this is a really broad category, so it will be broken into kind of before and after-school activities at the secondary level and before and after-school activities at the elementary levels, because there are two different sets of demands. So, for example, if the elementary start times are going to be starting earlier, and they clearly are, then does that, and they're gonna be ending their day earlier, does that mean we need to do some more creative thinking around our after-school, she-da-and-dita after-school care? Are there other opportunities for clubs or activities? For example, box has been in the early morning, is that gonna continue? Because that would make it really early, or do we make that an afternoon activity? So, there's just a lot of conversations that need to happen, both, again, at the elementary and secondary level. In the case of secondary, the obvious things are extra help and makeup sessions and athletics and performing arts. So, that's another couple of subcommittees. And then we also know that we're gonna have to look at schedules, especially at the secondary level. We might have to make adjustments to the daily schedules in the middle and high school. And some of those are actually opportunities that we may have been interested in kind of going after in the past, but just didn't have the wherewithal to do it. We now have kind of this on our plate, so this is the opportunity to make adjustments to our schedules. So, that's another one of the subcommittees. And then communications, and we all know that, we heard over and over through this process, and I think we probably said it to all of you guys at one time or another, that all the advice that we received throughout the kind of investigation of start times was that you cannot possibly over-communicate it. And the same needs to hold true for this. We wanna keep people informed of what we're working on along the way. So, we have a meeting scheduled for next week with the phase-two start times task force, and we will put something out after that to let people know where we are and bring them up to speed on some of this, because not everybody watches these school committee meetings at night. And that's it.
I was just curious, from the last meeting, I was struck by how many elementary school parents and people who don't even have elementary-age kids yet were opposed to the flip. So, I was wondering how we're communicating with them. And I know Michael had said some of them are coming on maybe phase two. There's some...
So, it's interesting. I mean, it sort of depends on who you talk to. There was an interesting comment on social media, that something to the effect of, you know, "It's pretty certain that the change, the earlier start times are really gonna be challenging for some families and for others, it's gonna be beneficial." And that's true. That's just kind of how this is. Yeah, I have heard from some people, it's always surprising to me, because we went through a pretty lengthy process. I think some of the folks in town who are not yet associated with the schools, so are not on our mail lists and don't necessarily know about our website, feel as if they weren't heard in the process. And that's unfortunate. But that said, that doesn't mean we can't still communicate with people as this thing goes forward and let people know kind of if there are gonna be opportunities for people to kind of express their interest in before or after-school care or what they, how they envision that to look. So, all of these subcommittees are taking on pretty big tasks. But, yeah, you know, it's so hard to know, Rachel. I mean, because, you know, some of the comments that I've heard have been that you never consulted elementary people.
Right.
That's just totally...
Well, it's also, I thought, from like pregnant women who are, I mean, you're not gonna be here for five years.
Well, we don't know.
Right, we don't know.
We don't know who these people are.
Right, right.
Extreme, took that out to the extreme.
Right.
You'd have to send it out all over the world to let people know that we may potentially be...
In case you may sometime move here.
If you may move here, so, that's kind of a challenge.
Yeah.
But I do understand from the preschool standpoint, and I think that was an opportunity missed, even though there are multiple preschools that our children attend, private preschools, we could have conceivably reached out to some of the more obvious ones. But even that said, we have plenty of people who send their kids to preschools like the Wellesley Cooperative in South Natick, I mean, all different places. So, it's really, that's a kind of a no-win. And what was, I think, really important is that we did actually have really good participation rates at the elementary levels. Michael has actually crunched the numbers of how many elementary families participated. I don't know if you know him off the top of your head, Michael, but it was a fairly...
Not off the top. I'll probably put something up on social media, but the, you know, what's interesting is actually the least amount of, the cohort with the least amount of participation was the high school. And so, you had 12th grade, 11th grade, then pre-K, and I'm not sure what the population is there, so I'm not sure...
You're talking about parents of...
Parents, yep. Then pre-K. And then it was fairly well-distributed amongst all the other grades, with fifth grade and sixth grade really kind of being out on the curve the most. But I also looked back and kind of tallied up commentary that we had, which was, we had some 700 substantive comments that were read through, you know, line by line and tallied and grouped by kind of category, which is, actually, the plan was and still is to use some of that substantive commentary for this next year, right? So, we do have more granular context of what concerns are. And, you know, last year's pre-K kids are, you know, in some respects by proxy are this year's represented by, or next year's kindergarten kids are represented by, you know, the information that we've already had from kindergarten this year, to some extent.
And we did include, obviously, the preschool families that...
Yeah.
...here.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this since this issue came up, that how we reach people, we have lots of kids in private school who might come back to district at some point. We have all the people who tour the schools and are deciding whether to come here or not. It's gonna be hard for us to reach, or to reach out to everyone who's not in the district, but I guess if we just keep reiterating that they can, should come to our website regularly and take the initiative to stay updated, and the Academic Innovation Committee is doing work that's gonna affect their kids... committee is doing work that's going to affect their kids, and there's a lot of stuff going on that if you're interested in what school's going to look like for your kid, then you need to do the due diligence. And, and I think we just have to keep reminding parents to look at the district websites.
Especially...
Because we can't be expected to be able to reach out to them.
I think your point, Brooke, it's, it's, it's so right. It's about keeping the channel open from, from, from the school's end. Because so much of it is, uh, you know, when, when you're, when you have extremely young infants, you don't know, for example, that there is something like dida.
Mm-hmm.
You, 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 you worry, how, how am I going to do this because I'm, I'm, I'm working under the bus? But then there is some, there is extended daycare. Um, so, yeah, totally understand and empathize with, um, anyone grappling how to deal with a change, any change in their life. But again, this is, I, I, I thought the committees were very eloquent, and the two committees that were unanimous in the change were the two elementary committees. Um, so, thank you, Andrew.
Does that answer?
Yeah.
Anything else for Dr. Kiel and his report?
Not, not to, to heap on more work by way of suggestion, um, but I, I, I think that for the, the, uh, school leadership and staff standpoint or from their standpoint is really a terrific year. A lot got accomplished. Um, and I don't know that, other than kind of small pockets of people, that the, the broader school communities are really aware of that. Or I would say the, the families. Um, so perhaps a, a summary of kind of the year in review, not, not too heavy, but, you know, bullet pointed with, because it really was fabulous, some of the things that we're doing. And, you know, you guys absolutely deserve to, to tout that.
Great.
Uh, and, and people ought to know that, hey, we're, we're doing a lot and we're not kind of taking our foot off the gas and there's some interesting things, uh, coming down the pike next year.
Yep. And I think, uh, well, not to toot our own horn, but we have these newsletters and this is a perfect opportunity for that. We started doing the newsletters this year. I think we had planned to do a spring newsletter. Fall, winter, spring, and then late summer. So, um, it's an excellent suggestion and it fits right in with our timeline. I like that idea a lot. Great.
Yep.
Very good. Don, take us through the financials. I, I did notice the warrant was on the agenda, but I don't think there's anything in our packet on the warrants.
You didn't get the...
Maybe I had...
Backpage.
Oh.
No, no, there's just a memo in your packet.
No, I didn't get this, thank you. All right.
Yeah, sorry.
Now I'm off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, so this is just your warrants that are signed by, uh, Rachel.
Yep.
Busy, busy member to do that for us, so thank you. Uh, your monthly financial report is as of May fifteenth, and, um, it's really pretty repetitive, probably one you saw in March, which isn't, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. Um, the one tweak we did to the salary variance was slightly increased it, I think by ten thousand dollars of what you saw in March. And that's mainly because now we're at a point in time where we're, uh, take, we're bringing in as a positive variance, the unused, um, educational assistance salaries. As you know, we had various positions, um, unfilled throughout the year, so I took a look at where we are right now, knowing that we're not going to hire anyone, right? Um, for the rest of the year. Um, and, and added another ten thousand dollars to your, um, positive variance. And that may slightly go up again when you get your final numbers in September, but that's a pretty good estimate right now. And so what I did is just reminded you, because it's been a while, of, of how that came about. Um, so I won't repeat that again, most of it's the same, but it's really just staffing changes and the biggest piece being the strategic learning center educator that we did not fill this year. On expenditures, um, we really are operating at or near budget. I highlight a few things for you. Um, one of this, you see pretty large variance in your, uh, regular ed textbooks. If you remember, we added money on in fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen to add to our new science curriculum. As it came to be, they really didn't need to do, um, additional purchases for what they needed to, uh, um, implement. So that is a chunk of money that will return back to the town because we did not need to use it for what we asked it for. Um, and then we are slightly over on our maintenance of buildings, so our reserve. So that's, remember, we put that in the budget to take care of maintenance, but also emergencies. And we did have a few more emergencies this year, uh, than normal, and I think we're getting to the point where it's the age of the building. So some of our original equipment now is starting to fail, and that reserve gives us the opportunity just to go straight and get it fixed right away. Uh, so I highlighted some of the, um, things that we had to do this year. And then again, we, we continue to have a positive variance with our oil because of, of our heat, because of our oil price. And, uh, we're getting ready to enter into that bid process to see where we'll land next year. Um, that's always an exciting time for me, I don't know why, but it's always exciting to see where the oil price is going to land. So I'll let you know in June where that, where that turns out. Um, you have an updated report...
You love you, Don, thank you.
You have an updated report of your out of district detail. Um, in total, your number didn't change a lot, although we had, uh, one student leave the district and another student go out of district. But at the time of the year we are, the, the tuition impact is, is very minimal, uh, because we're so far into the year. So you just had a slight increase in your negative variance, uh, to date and out of district, um, with those changes. And I don't foresee anything happening between now and, you know, when school gets out in June, so that will sort of be your number. What I do envision is that, um, at the bottom of your statement, it says circuit breaker reimbursement offset at seventy-two percent. We are estimating that to come in more at like seventy-four point something. Um, so you will see additional circuit breaker, uh, return back to the town once we finalize those numbers in June.
So we cover the, the delta and the negative with the circuit breaker and then send the rest of it back to the town?
Exactly. Because you, you actually, you actually budget a hundred percent of your out of district, so when we go over, um, you have the circuit breaker to fall back on, plus we know...
Yeah.
That we're not going to have to go too far into that. Um, you actually almost have enough in your operating to cover a little bit of your, so we're almost giving back a hundred percent of the circuit breaker. Any questions on any of the financials?
Just that little science curriculum thing, what, I just would love to understand more of how, how we were able to achieve the improvements with, without buying any new stuff.
So I'll know a little bit, but I'll let Laura, I mean, if you remember, they were buying the kits.
Yep.
And I think that was where we, you know, remember we did this budget like last?
Yep.
And I think the thought was to, um, order more of those, and I think they realized that that wasn't something, and I think there's some ungrown things that you guys used.
Right. We, we weren't sure with the kits if we would want to purchase another units worth of kits. And it turned out indeed that what we were already using, we revised, uh, and thought that it was valuable. Uh, and we just, we really just needed that one year's worth of new units to, to match the standards.
Okay.
And so I, I feel like we're in a really good place now at, at both elementary schools.
Pine Hill was the same thing. They actually used theirs for some other needed supplies, but, um, they, they were in the same, so they, both schools treated it the same way.
And, and the other sort of question I had was, um, the several medical leaves this year, there's not, it, is it dramatically more than in past years? I'm just wondering, I just, with the social emotional health of the staff?
Um, part of them are maternity leaves.
Okay.
So some, and some were medical leaves for surgery and such. So what that does though is that makes sure, obviously, you've got to cover, sometimes they don't have enough, uh, s- sick time to get paid to, so that releases their salaries. But, uh...
But there's no trend or anything in the...
No, no. And we're seeing that across all four schools, actually. Um, it's just, there's a little, a bit of more activity.
Does that make it a trend then, or not?
Um, no, I mean, really, it's just, there's, I mean, out of all the teachers, if you have one or two, it has an impact on your financials. I guess because we're so small, it like jumps out at you. So it's probably more of that than, that there's a lot, but it doesn't take, if they're out for three months, you've got double.
Good.
That's a good question.
Lot of babies.
So i- if you're out for three months, double, that's not a, I mean, at some point you have sick and then...
If they have complete sick days to cover that, then...
The sick days.
Yes.
Okay.
It's like their short-term disability, yeah. Um, and so what I'm thinking, just to, to, to lay the groundwork for June, um, we did your statements as of May fifteenth. If I don't have a lot of changes, I don't plan on doing another set of financials for you in three weeks. Um, I'll let you know.
Don't look at us.
Exactly, anyway. Uh, but, uh, then you'll get your final June at your first meeting in September. So, uh, that's sort of my thought process, only because there's a short time between now and June tenth when you meet again.
Can I ask a, a boring revolving fund question? For, for each of them, or perhaps the, the, for the most significant ones, is there a level at which you feel uncomfortable with the amount? I know, I know we've talked a lot about in the past about flexibility and about having, uh, financial flexibility to address things if the building presents us with immediate challenges that need fixing right now. So I, I totally, totally have, have always supported that. I'm just, I was just wondering, is there any, is there any level at which, um, the, the dawn furtory voice starts going? Goodness me.
We, we've actually spent, um, your revolving funds down quite a bit over the last five years, because the building fund never used to get touched.
I remember that.
And we've, we've actually been more active, I think, in using the building fund. The food services, if you remember, I'm going to say four years ago, you were in negative operating position. And, um, the beauty of now having a little bit more of a, uh, revolving fund is like we purchased a new milk cooler.
Yep.
Um, and so that balance is now allowing us to do some upgrades in the kitchen because now it is hitting some of the useful lives of the equipment, and it's a way for us to, um, not have to go to the town for some of that, but be it's funding by the actual, the program itself.
So even for the kitchen, even though that's in the onsite insight now, is that, we, we, this allows...
Both pieces of it, we can, yes.
This allows us to lessen the burden on the town.
Exactly.
So the capital request?
Yep.
Exactly.
We're knocking those things off.
Right. And then the, the gifts, you know, has been substantially, uh, spent down.
Yep.
Um, and so I think it's good to build it back up because when things come up that we've used the gift accounts for, it's nice to be able to, to call onto that. Uh, for example, you funded more than half of the audio, the AV equipment, um, in the cafeteria because you had that and we got some matching, uh, money for much. So that's, it allows you, like you said, flexibility, so I don't think we've hit the...
Okay.
Um, point where I'm concerned. Your circuit breaker goes down to zero.
Yeah, well, it's on.
Um, and so that never builds, um, a balance. So on your food services too, um, you, I've given you sort of your, um, monthly participation and revenue over the last, it's actually fiscal year fourteen. And on the backside, you have comparable lunch prices, um, from area schools. Those are as of fiscal year nineteen, because remember, I, we presented in, um, your April joint meeting, a, a request for price increases, telling you that I would give you additional information at your individual meetings, that we would then vote the price increase at your June joint meeting. So this is an opportunity just to see where we stand. You can see when we put the last price increase in fiscal year seventeen, you didn't see a, a change in participation. So we don't anticipate having a price, having a price increase decreasing participation. Um, and with that, in fiscal year seventeen is when Janelle started doing more scratch cooking, and so I think those two together, the price increase, but the higher quality of food kept your participation rate, um, at the same, if not a little bit higher. And she's continuing, um, to work, you know, towards that, and now having the nutritionist off, so, uh, she funnels down both to the elementary. So we're in a really good position, I think, with the quality and the types of food that we're offering the students for lunch.
This question might, you might not be able to answer, or you might not have the answer available. So we've sort of been in a, every couple of year cycle to review the prices and, which I think is a smart cadence to be in. Um, seeing where we are compared to the peer group you presented, um, do we know when, when they do price increases? Uh, you know, so I'm wondering, right now we're, you know, near the upper echelon, which isn't necessarily something I'm uncomfortable with, but is, is all of a sudden, a couple of these schools next year are going to be increasing, so we're not always there?
It's really all over the board, I'll be honest. I went back to the last time we, we presented this packet, um, three years ago, and some of these are the same prices. So I think it all depends on, um, you know, how much time is spent looking at that. We're fortunate that our lunch program is somewhat subsidized, uh, not as much as the elementary, as at the region with the à la carte. That's really fifty-five percent of her revenue is the à la carte, and that's where there's profit margin that actually is probably building your fund balances, because we really break even on the lunches themselves. Some of them, um, we make a little bit and some we lose a little bit, so you just look to even that. The goal is to provide the best quality of lunch at the lowest price, so we're available to all students. But there are labor costs that go up every three years. So I think what I'd like to see is get us on a cycle of every three years, um, increasing that and taking into consideration what the last contract was for the food service and what's happening in the food, and making sure we're staying sort of where we are with the other area districts. We also have to look at our own, um, internal operations and make sure that we're, you know, um, operating efficiently and effectively and, and fiscally responsibly.
Well, one thing that's, and again, I'm not sure with the other schools, but our situation here versus their kitchen situation there and what machines we're using or what cooking's available, um, it's not always comparing apples to apples.
Right.
Because the way we prepare our meals here is, is very different, and some of them might have a full kitchen available to them.
Right.
So, um, I recognize that, but...
Right. So I think it's, I think our goal is to make sure we're sort of in the middle of the, we're not too high, we're not too low. But Janelle is really good about looking and, you know, she knows right now that we, to not start eating into the, um, the revenues from the, um, à la carte, we needed to give ourselves a little boost.
What's à la carte?
So these percentages include the à la carte or just lunch percentage?
No, the, the participation is just lunch.
Just lunch, it doesn't include the à la carte?
Not the participation. The revenue does, but not the participation.
Okay.
Yeah. Because the participation really is looking at how many of their, the standard lunch is sold with, um, the, you know, attendance.
Okay. À la carte's like a drink or a chip.
So not when my kids eat hot Doritos for lunch?
All my favorites.
That's not counting. Yeah, the, right.
Someone buys three chips.
My kids come home and eat like hot, oh yeah, they eat like hot Doritos for lunch.
Yeah, right. But we're making some money off of it.
We're making money.
The, the participation rate, um, has it, is it, has it compare, or maybe how is the trend compared to, um, the other three schools in the region, in the district? And then also, anecdotally, if you're going to, what would you say the participation rate is in an average of these?
At the other schools? Where, if you remember from, uh, the report that we had done, um, like three or four years ago, we ranked really low in participation.
That's what I thought.
Um, right. We have increased participation slightly at the, um, at Chicaring. It is as flat as it can be at Pine Hill. It's just the nature, I think, of that school, no matter what she does, it stays flat, it's more like at forty-three, forty-four percent. And we're actually seeing an increase at the region. And I think that's attributable to, uh, the nutritionists coming in and the special meals that they've been doing. Um, they are going over really well, and she's increasing participation because of the variety and the quality of what she's offering.
And the Asian chicken.
And the Asian chicken.
Yeah, the multicultural responsiveness, I didn't know it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I give her a lot of credit because, uh, they go out and, I mean, our, just so you know, I mean, Rachel sees, but our produce is come, comes from Russo's in Watertown. I mean, that's high-quality produce, so that's the type of, um, main, main ingredients that are coming in here to make the meals, um, better served, so.
They're actually doing a report for your June meeting, just so you can see, um, kind of an update of what they've done new and differently.
Did you enjoy meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Just for you to review on your own. Um, and it talks a little bit about the work of our nutritionist and how that trickles down.
Right. And some of that was in the memo that was in your April packet too, Janelle.
Great.
If you have any other questions prior to the meeting, just let Henry know and we can answer them for you.
Do you have this electronically?
Yeah, I'll have Cheryl add it to the packet.
Thank you. No.
Dawn, can I just ask you a quick question?
Oh, yeah.
It's just field trips and classroom pizza parties. There's no such thing as classroom pizza parties.
That's, I think it's just a generic, there are a lot of times there are, she doesn't have classes, come to lunch, because I'll have her change that way.
It's just somebody looking at it and be like, oh, we used to have a lot.
Yeah.
We helped to increase the...
Thank you. Anything else for Dawn? Wonderful, as always, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item we have is our consent agenda for our approval of the minutes from March 7th of 2019. Does anyone have any comments, updates, admissions?
There's one error. On March 7th, on R1, item 8, I made a motion and said that Mr. Spellman seconded. He's a very lovely man, but I don't, I don't think it was him, so that's the only thing.
That was put in there to make sure we were reading the packet.
Amy will be happy.
Amy put that one in there.
Just saying, so that, but with that edit, I...
You're all set, yep, great. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented in our packet for the March 7th meeting?
Yes.
A second?
Ms. Spellman.
Ms. Spellman will second?
Mrs., whatever.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
And I'll have Cheryl make that change before they're posted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is communications, just for your information, you have the Sherman School Committee and the Regional School Committee minutes for you to take a look at. And our final agenda item, it's always a little sad, but maybe happy, depending on where you sit on the side of the recognition. We have two school committee members that have given us a lot of their time and effort and knowledge and dedication that we'd like to recognize. And I'm going to say something, and then I think Andrew might have a little something as well, but if I may. Now, the first person I would like to thank and point out is Michael, Michael Jaffe. So Michael came into sort of, to be at Dover, at Chicaring, around some of these searches for our superintendent. I remember seeing Michael show up in the audience a couple of times, and it was great, you know? It's like, okay, this is someone who is getting engaged and expressed interest to join our school committee three years ago. So he's been with us since then and brings a lot to the table. Brings a lot of insight, knowledge, asks questions that I know I personally haven't otherwise thought of, so I always thought that was excellent. Michael spent some time a few years ago with our negotiation, representing Dover on the teacher contract negotiation and had great insight there. And then most recently, has done a lot with the school startup task force. Always interested in the data, getting to the facts, making them clear, making them actionable. And I know a lot of us in this room and other committees, thank you for that as well. As well as, and I won't even get them all right, but sat in liaisons with various other committees that our school committee sits in on and represents. So want to say thank you. The good news is, you're representing Dover, assuming the vote went through tonight, if the polls closed. Representing Dover at the Regional School Committee, so a lot of that great work will continue. Just won't be around this table, but we'll be together on a regular basis at the regional, at the joint school committee meeting, so. From all of us, thank you. Next, another individual that has given a lot of time, six years, two tours of duty, two of which you chaired, I believe, unless you tell me there's three.
Yes.
Okay. chaired for two, two years, which was very, very helpful, followed Dawn's leadership. Adrian always has wonderful insights as well, brings thought, humor a lot of the time, and insight that has been, and been great. He has reached out to various different constituents between the athletic programs, comes back with feedback from PTO, comes back with feedback from various different citizen groups within the Dover community that aren't directly impacted by our school on a regular basis. So seemed to always have a good pulse with what's going on within our school, but as well as what's happening outside of the school, within a town that we could impact. So that's been very, very helpful and refreshing for all of us. One of the biggest things that you will be remembered for is our wonderful air conditioning. And I think open house in September, and end-of-year performances in June, and then our occasional heat wave that New England tends to get, or high humidity.
Today?
We were close today, I was wondering if the air conditioning was going to be on. So the staff, it was on, you see? Our administrators, our faculty, everyone that works in this building, anyone that visits this building on those hot days and evenings, will be impacted in a positive manner for many, many years to come. So I also want to say thank you, and please don't deny our phone calls if we have any requests for some historical information, but thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
And I would just like to obviously add to what Henry has said, and I'll keep it brief. But Michael, I'm really, really happy you're coming up to the region. You have been just a great partner for me. I think that we think big, I think we're ambitious, I think we want to see things get done. I think we're both tired of hearing, well, we're going to do this someday in education. I would say the same for Adrian. It's that kind of guidance that I actually need. It's, it's too easy for us as school leaders to be complacent, especially in a system that does as well as we do. But you guys keep your eyes on the prize and always continue to ask us to be bold, for example, Adrian. You know, I don't think I'll ever forget that, because it's something that really, you know, spoke to me in the inner core. Because being bold is what we need. We need people to be courageous, and it's just too easy to just say, well, I don't really have to, because we're good. And so I just appreciate both of you guys doing that for me. Michael, I look forward to seeing, seeing you on the region next year. We obviously have plenty of work to do, so we'll be working closely together. And Adrian, really, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate your participation in hiring me. And it meant a lot to me, the conversations I had with the chairs when I came on board, that were reassuring, welcoming, stabilizing. Made me feel like I really belonged in this role, so I can't thank you enough for that. And unfortunately, Michael, you don't get the same recognition that Adrian does, but, because he's leaving for good. Well, maybe not forever. I hope that you'll open this, Adrian, because it really speaks to, and it's a very, very, very small token of our appreciation, but it speaks to your, your support as we kind of built the strategic plan and our core values for the school system.
Oh, fantastic, thank you so much.
It has a little plaque on the back and...
That's lovely, thank you so much. That's lovely. I'm going to say a few thank yous, if that's okay, and then very, very, everyone's been working a long time, so I promise I'll be very brief. First time I came to a school committee meeting was to give some community comments on improvements in school safety that I thought should take place. And it was Carolyn Ringel, who informed me that if I kept on like that, I'd find myself on this side of the table. But I want to thank Carolyn and Dawn and Claire Graham and Tim Cafrey, the school committee members, who in the past helped me very much and enabled so much good that I think takes place in this room. I also want to thank everyone on this side of the table individually for continuing to, I think, give so much of their intellect, their heart, and their integrity. Michael, getting to know you as how unswervingly dedicated you are to do the right thing is really, it's been, it's been great. And I echo the words that Michael's serving on the region is going to be absolutely tremendous. And all of you becoming closer friends, it's been really wonderful, so thank you. Laura, I'd like to thank all of your staff here in the building, all of the staff, the educators, the custodial staff, the, everyone who works here. Because all that they have done in, not just the last six years, but from my perspective here in the last six years, has been pretty awe-inspiring. From a personal perspective, I, it would be wrong if I didn't make a personal thank you with my parent add-on to Christine Atkinson, who had the most wonderful mix of strength and personalization and kindness to my children, so thank you. But I, really what struck me today, and Beth, hearing all that you have done, and frankly, you've come in like a white tornado of, no, of absolute, just a core desire to lift our eyes to what can be done. And I think Andrew, Andrew, working with you is, is just seeing two elements of education vision, which is just wonderful to behold. So what you both do has been tremendous, and Andrew's seeing, not to patronize you, but because I met you at the beginning, saw a little bit more of what was behind the kimono, was someone very excited, someone very excited to come, but this is your district. And it was, there was a couple of moments of, gosh, this is going to be a little, a little different. Seeing how you, seeing how you've grown with confidence is just absolutely tremendous in every way. And I, I think confidence is the, is what I see here. Confidence, confidence of advancement and confidence of change and embracing change and confidence of bringing this whole district to the next level. Dawn, what you do in your office enables the various constituents, the building heads here, Andrew and Beth, it enables them to be able to start flying, because you're such a solid and excellent professional. So I think everyone knows this, but for me, that's where I think things are able to start. So again, I see things in such a confident state, and I want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a distinct disadvantage of having to follow Adrian's words.
It's been that way for six years.
So I won't. I echo almost everything that you communicated. I do want to add that it's been a pleasure working with the kindness and caring. And it's, it's a really nice school committee, and continue that, you know, continue the echoing, the, or embodying the core values is important. But the, I won't say agreeing all the time, but being cordial and civil and kind is really important and special. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, I guess...
Off the record.
Drink some later.
With that being said, meeting adjourned?
Thank you.
Thank you.